Good afternoon. I'd like to call the June 25, 2013 City Council Meeting to order. Please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco, Hachkis, House, Mario, Rouse, White, Mayor Schneider.
Here. I know that there's Ms. Mario right here. Okay. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there's one, Madam Mayor, and that is item number two has been removed from the agenda and will be rescheduled to a later date.
Okay. So that's on the consent calendar. And so now we'll go to public comment. I have here a number of speaker slips, and we'll start with Kenneth Locke. We have two minutes up here at the dais at the podium, followed by David Daniel Diaz.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I came up last week and brought this sign. UCSB sucks. And the idea there is that, as I mentioned last week, is that the education that they're providing is actually now inferior. Turns out it's always been inferior. And in the next educational system, everything kind of changed. It's kind of a game changer. And the way to understand this is I have a sign that says, "An idiot with a master's degree is an oxymoron." Yeah, it's just kind of funny how we've allowed kind of master's degrees to be handed out to kind of anybody that can hold a pencil kind of thing. But the whole idea is that the likes of UCSB, they have kind of that commodity that they are actually selling to this community, say. And I'm sorry to say again, it's an inferior product. And I think it's real basic stuff here. But the thing with me is that I understand this stuff, and I've actually kind of transcended that whole relationship with education. And I'm sorry, I'm kind of like the only person who's done that. And it's really important that we all recognize the shortcomings that we are kind of suffering right now in relation to our misappropriation. And it's just kind of interesting. I'm flying these signs, and I'm actually getting people who are agreeing with me. So if that inspires you guys to come into agreement. Let's see, I have this other one. I think I've phoned before. "Stupid is not sustainable." And right now, we have to understand, say, this community as well as the big picture is actually being completely stupid. And there's no intelligence here, and it's not sustainable. Thank you.
David Daniel Diaz will be followed by Wayne Scholes.
Good afternoon, Santa Barbara. The other day, I went into the MTD to get a new card because the picture had worn out. And they said, "You're going to have to fill out a new application and take it to your doctor to verify that, again, that you are physically disabled." And I explained to them, "You people have had me on record since '74 as being physically disabled. So starting this year, if you're disabled and you're Medicare, Medi-Cal, low income, it doesn't matter, you're going to have to go to the doctors and spend money. So it's going to be a burden on the state and the county financially because someone has to pay for the doctor visit." And these people have their Medicare and Medi-Cal cards. I asked why, and they said that it's just a new program, and it's going to happen every five years. And there are thousands of disabled and elderly people who are using these cards, and they're going to have to be subjected to more scrutiny again. And hopefully, our government officials here can do something, help influence the bus company to... If you're disabled, you're disabled. If it's permanent, it's permanent. You can't get fixed. So why push these people through the additional scrutiny? Secondly, I'm glad that there was a meeting earlier today where the hedges that are going to hopefully be trimmed that are extending over to the sidewalk could be great because there's a lot of people in wheelchairs who are very frustrated and tired of going into the streets as a result of the sidewalks being blocked. And thirdly, a little commercial. Andy Codwell keeps moving up to Wendy McCaw, and eventually, maybe one day, they'll name a slot machine after you at the casino. Have a great day.
Wayne Scholes will be followed by Gail Zanin.
Yes, I'm here today to announce to the public and everybody in this meeting that Monday, I'll be making an appointment with the city clerk's office to get the appropriate papers to file for the position of mayor of Santa Barbara. For those of you who haven't seen me in a while, that's because I've been out in the desert working on the new clean renewable energy source, which is called solar. Been on a three-square-mile project 30 miles west of Blythe. And I can tell you, the temperature's reached well over 120, 125 degrees. If I can put up with that heat, I can put up with any heat that anybody can bring forward in a political campaign. I know Mr. Wiley was probably wondering, and Mr. Armstrong was probably wondering, "Where the heck did Wayne go? We sure miss him here." Because he never brings anything up that's disturbing to us. He's always got a pat on the back. And we all know that's not true. What I'm going to be doing is working towards bringing independence and freedoms back to the public instead of rolling over and agreeing with policies that restrict our freedoms and inhibit our rights according to the Constitution. The next couple of months, you'll be hearing more from me. I look forward to this race. You'll be finding out more and more about me. Most people only know about this little situation when the chief arrested me illegally up at Shoreline Park. That's only one part of me. I look forward to introducing myself to those of you who don't know me, and for the thousands and thousands of you in town that do know me, I'm going to ask that you talk to your friends and write letters. Let's prove to people that we do not have to buy a position in politics. Money is not the number-one determining factor. It's who votes.
Gail Zanin will be followed by Tamara Erickson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Gail Zanin. I live at 407 State Street. And I just got notice that Killer Shrimp is going in across the street, and they got a dance permit. And I just wanted to explain for a couple of seconds. We have lived at 407 for now 12 years, and we've tried to work with our neighbors who are at bars. And I finally asked how I can get the enforcement done on the ordinances that are on the books for the noise for residents. And I talked to Sergeant Cruz, and he said he didn't know that there was one. And I don't know how to determine, coming in front of you, asking you individually, how I should proceed with the city to acknowledge that we have a residence and we have residence information for noise mitigation. And I know the police are out there. They're doing their job. But I'm feeling I'm at my wits' end now because I felt that if the rules were on the books, they would be followed. And at this point, in 12 years, they've not been. Thank you.
Tamara Erickson will be followed by Rondi Guthrie, and the final speaker will be Robert Burke.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Tamara Erickson. Gail passed on a copy of the letter that was mailed to her. I subscribe to the Fire Police Commission postings. It's one of my most exciting emails. But didn't get any notice of the hearing that's in two days. And I looked on their site. It's not there. And so I'm here to ask you for help. That concerns me. Maybe it's posted some other way. Maybe it's posted at the Gebhardt Room. I'm not sure. But if the notice that she had said that the public has the opportunity or will have the opportunity to be heard and offer comments on the proposed dance permit, I guess my questions are, how is the public supposed to know that another dance permit is being recommended? So that's question number one. And then number two is, in an email from Police Sanchez's executive assistant, she says, "Since staff has already made their recommendation to grant the dance permit, there isn't much that can be done. You might want to come and speak to the commissioners. That probably would be the best thing." And that's discouraging for someone who wants to be a part of the process and thinks you have a voice to find out the decision's been made. So my question is, why is the police department recommending Dance Permit Number 20 in this very small area where there are three hotels, lots of residents, as she explained, and one nightlife enforcement officer on the team who admitted in public at the last meeting here that he doesn't have the resources to, number one, enforce all of the conditions on the permits, and usually draws down police from other places where they're needed to handle the crowds? We're trying to run a hotel. If hotel guests don't sleep, they wake up grumpy. They don't spend money in the stores. They don't go to the restaurants. They don't come back. And that affects all of us. TOT is a big deal for the budget. So we need your help. If the police department is going to approve this, the commissioners say they don't come downtown. So they apparently don't know what's being created by the permits they're issuing. You do. And so I'm just pleading with you to help us. Help us. Let us know what we can do and help us to turn this around. Thank you.
Mr. Hachkis has a question.
Ms. Erickson, hi. Are you not constantly, I don't want to say a victim, but the noise, does it affect where you are, your location there inevitably, always?
Always, yes.
So I don't want to be mean, but one more is just like the straw that broke camel's back?
You've been listening to me for probably 10 years, ringing the same bell. This is not a new story. This is just, you know, it's been up to here, and now it's up to here. So one more is... And every time another one comes in, it's one more. So, I mean, we've been at that location as a family-owned business since 1975. There were probably three nightclubs, bars, when we got there. Now there are 20 in our block. And so, you know, it doesn't make sense to continue to pack clubs near hotels. It doesn't make sense to me.
So you didn't get notification of the proposed licensing at all?
We didn't. But I don't think we're within the... I think maybe it's... There's a... I think you have to be within 200 feet or something as a resident. I'm not sure what the...
So that's maybe why you didn't get notified, do you think? Because you're not within 200 feet, or you are?
No, but normally, the notices for the meetings are posted on the Fire Police Commission posting.
We can check certainly on the notice of the meeting. It certainly should be on the agenda if it's supposed to be on the agenda.
Yeah, there is no agenda. Yeah. The agenda's not posted either.
The agenda's not posted. Okay. We can check into that.
I'd like to talk to you more about this at another time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Francisco?
Or Ms. Erickson?
Oh, sorry, Ms. Erickson.
Just one more question. So the... What you had in your email, that was a quote from Barbara Sansone?
Quote.
What was the question to her?
I can forward you the whole email.
Great. I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I can do that, sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Could the entire council get copied on that, please?
Rondi Guthrie?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'd like to introduce Rondi Guthrie, who will be taking my position as region manager for Southern California Edison as I move on to transmission projects. And I know that she's very qualified and very familiar with the Santa Barbara area, so I'd like to introduce you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Patricia. And just wanted to say, I look forward to working with all of you on implementing energy efficiency programs throughout the city and ensuring a safe, reliable, and affordable supply of electricity for our residents and businesses. So I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, and welcome. Robert Burke?
I have a question, if I could, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Hachkis?
To either one of you, can we look forward to your support with the holiday Christmas tree next year, please?
We are going to be working on that.
You're working on that?
It's a hot topic, yes, we are.
I may have somebody who wants to also help you, so you could have a partner on that, but please be part of it.
Excellent. We would love to meet with you on this.
Okay.
Downtown organization as well, so it sounds good. Thank you.
Mr. Burke?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Next week, you will be considering the Affordable Housing Ordinance. And I've prepared a paper on that. It is a long one. It is a complicated... It's a complex one, but not complicated. And the questions I had is, upon what basis do we make these decisions? What are our assumptions? And how did we get here with that? So in the paper, I parse the grammar of our assumptions and to hopefully allow you to reflect light upon the decision-making process that you go through, as well as the 100 years of social progress that we have gone through. So I had fun writing it. I hope you have fun reading it. And like I say, it is long, and I hope you take it... I hope to have it in your mailboxes by tomorrow noon. And my request is that you take it home and read it because it will require time, patience, and concentration. I thank you for your attention.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Move on to the consent calendar. Go ahead and read what you need to read.
Item three, adoption of ordinance extending supervisory employees' memorandum of understanding and salary plans, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the council of the City of Santa Barbara extending the terms of the 2012 to 2013 memorandum of understanding between the City of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara City Supervisory Employees Bargaining Unit, Supervisors Unit. The 2012 to 2013 salary plan applicable to unrepresented managers and professional attorneys, including the city administrator and city attorney. And the 2012 to 2013 salary plan applicable to certain unrepresented safety managers, adopted by ordinance number 5587 until June 30, 2015, and providing salary increases consistent with the two-year financial plan. Item four, acceptance of sidewalk easement and approval of Caltrans landscape maintenance agreement at 4151 Foothill Road, recommending that council, A, adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the City of Santa Barbara accepting a street easement deed for all street purposes on portions of certain real property commonly known as 4151 Foothill Road, and authorizing the Public Works Director to execute the same and cause the recordation by the city clerk of said easement with the county recorder. And B, adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing the Public Works Director to execute Caltrans agreements for maintenance of landscape area at 4151 Foothill Road within the state highway right-of-way. Item 18, adoption of ordinance for proposed historic district designation of Ellen Counto Hotel Site at 800 Alvarado Place, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Title 22 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code with respect to historic resources and the Ellen Counto Hotel property and its designation as a city historic district. And item 19, adoption of ordinance for 2013 citywide zoning and general plan map amendments, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only. A, an ordinance of the council of the City of Santa Barbara amending sectional zone maps SB 02, SB 03, SB 04, SC 01, SC 02, SC 03, SD 01, SE 03, SA 02, SA 03, SA 04, SB 01, SE 01, and SE 02 in Chapter 28.12 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code. And B, an ordinance of the council of the City of Santa Barbara amending sectional zone maps SD 02 and SD 03 in Chapter 28.12 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. I need to pull item 19 to vote on Section B separately. And Mr. Rouse?
Madam Mayor, I need to abstain from item 12. I'm a board member of the Downtown Organization.
Okay. Can we have a motion for item 12?
Move item 12.
Is there a second for item 12? Sorry, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Aye.
Okay. And then if we could have a motion for 19A?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
And 19B?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And one abstention. I have property within 500 feet of 19B. Any other items to pull off? Mr. White?
I have a question on item eight, Madam Mayor.
Okay, if you could read item eight.
Assistance for firefighters grant reimbursement agreement with Carpinteria Summerland Fire Protection District.
Mr. White?
I just would appreciate a word or two from our fire folks about that program. What is it? And have we participated in it in the past?
Chief?
Mayor Schneider and Councilmember White. This is a FEMA grant, Assistance for Firefighter Grant, which we have participated in this process over the last 10 years, and I'm aware of. This grant came about as a result of a collaboration between Carpinteria Summerland Fire Protection District, Montecito, and ourselves. Carpinteria was actually the lead agency on this. What it allows us is a greater compatibility of our radios in the front country, and it results in each of our firefighters having their personal radio issued to them. And also, it includes an upgrade to the paging system and our computer-aided dispatch system at the police department. This is an 80/20 grant, so 80% of the cost are picked up by the feds with us, remaining picking up the remaining 20.
I appreciate it. And we're the... Even though CARP was the lead requester, we're the lead beneficiary.
That's always good, yes.
So it's a wonderful program, yeah. But I'm just... I was curious about what, in the past, the city have... Has the city applied? And then what has the city... How has the city benefited from this in the past? And I don't want an encyclopedia. I want a highlight, please.
Well, for example, this was a 2012 grant that we applied for and got through Carpinteria the year before. The 2011 grant, we got about $400,000 to implement a diesel exhaust extraction system in each of our fire stations. Before that, we've gotten turnout equipment, personal property equipment, personal protective property equipment funded to us. And before that, we've gotten self-contained breathing apparatus.
And do these work similarly, regionally? In other words, let's say we were the lead agency at one point, and then the others are...
And the other ones I referenced just now is just us taking the lead and securing the grants for our city.
And other departments benefiting as well in a similar way?
No, there was not a regional cooperation.
Just for this department?
Just for this one, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
To clarify, though, other departments are benefiting on independent grants. The... Our understanding is that the FEMA people that are looking at these grants now, especially as the money is becoming scarcer, are looking for these type of grants where there's collaboration and there's a regional approach to a problem.
Makes good sense. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So item two was already pulled. Do we have a motion for the balance of the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. Report from the Ordnance Committee. Mr. House?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We met today to discuss two things. The Stormwater Management Ordinance, which will be coming to City Council soon, along with some minor revisions to our technical guidance manual. And also began a discussion or continued a discussion about fences, screens, walls, and hedges. As you can imagine, a really interesting topic. And it's got a long way to go before it gets back to City Council, but we sent it on its way with some guidance. It'll get back to Ordnance Committee possibly in December after going by the other boards and commissions and then to City Council in the new year.
Okay, thank you. Item number 21.
Las Pocetus Road at Cliff Drive Intersection Improvements Project update.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey, Ms. Anderson, whenever you're ready.
Christine Anderson, Public Works Director. And we're back to provide a status report on the Las Pocetus Road Cliff Drive Intersection Improvements Project and also seeking guidance from City Council on how to move forward with the project. The purpose of the project, which originated many years ago, the original application process for the grant project itself goes back to 2001. But the primary issue was to improve traffic operations and reduce congestion at the intersection. The current operation at this location during the AM peak is a level of service E and in the PM peak, a level of service F. And in a range of level of service between A and F, with A being relatively free-flowing and F becoming the end of the congestion and delay assignment, the comparability is to the city's target of achieving level of service C operation throughout our city intersections. So the recognition of this need, as I said, was long-term. We went through a project study report beginning in 2001 that was approved by Caltrans in 2002. We looked at two options, a traffic signal at the intersection and a roundabout. At the time, the analysis was done in 2001 and 2002. The cost estimate was relatively similar for both of the options, and the roundabout alternative was preferred. So the grant for $750,000, which at the time was the estimate for full construction of the entire project, was approved at that time. Since 2002, the STIP has been modified many times. The state, as you may recall, went through a period of a real erratic funding availability, and many of the projects were moved back and moved back. This was one of the projects that experienced that push. We also began the discussions with Caltrans regarding the transfer of jurisdiction for SR 225, which of course is the cliff in Las Pocetus leg of this project. And that created some, I think, potential delay only from the standpoint of the expectation if we were able to move forward aggressively that this would have become an entirely city operational improvement, and there would be different paths in terms of the approval process. So there were a lot of factors that, I think, came into play with the delay that's occurred from 2002 to 2013. Now we're looking at programming of the $750,000 grant in fiscal year 15. The other impact of the delay from 2002 is the purchasing power of that $750,000 in 2002 compared to today has lost about 30% of its value. So right now, we have $750,000 that is in a grant for construction phase only. And as I said, it's programmed for fiscal year 1516. In January of 2012, council approved a contract with Penfield and Smith to review the preliminary designs and cost estimates for both the traffic signal and the roundabout options for this location. This is a chart that shows a comparison of the current level of service. So that's the no-project alternative. In 2012, the current level of service in... is a level of service E. The numbers alongside of the level of service indicate the intersection delay in seconds. So it shows you the operational impact of what those categories amount to. The 2035 is the 20-year forecast after construction, and that is projected to be a level of service F in 2035. The traffic signal option that's looked at here, there are a couple of options. One would have one southbound lane. The other would have two southbound lanes on the Las Pocetus leg. This is the one single southbound lane, and it reflects that we're still able to achieve a level of service currently at level B. And the forecast in 2035 would be a level of service C. If we went to a two-southbound lane option, we could achieve level of service B in both 2012 and 2035. The roundabout option provides a level of service B currently and a level of service B looking out to 2035.
We have some questions. Mr. Hachkis?
Yeah.
This applies either primarily or exclusively to the Las Pocetus part of this intersection, correct? correct? In other words, that's where the greatest delay is, on a peak hour?
Yeah, you want to talk?
Mr. Bailey?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss. Yes, currently in the PM peak, the largest delays are in the southbound direction.
Because on Cliff Drive, I've never seen the lines very long.
No. For example, currently, during the busiest time of day, somebody in the southbound direction might experience a 58-second delay from the time they reach the back of the queue till they get through the stop sign. Westbound, the worst would be about 27 seconds. So that's the worst time of day generally. It's much less than that.
So it's the Las Pocetus that we're trying to fix, right?
Yeah, that'll be the biggest benefactor.
Thank you.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Bailey, I'm not sure if you've been out to Galida, but to me, that Chiareal right by Fairview, it seems like longer than 76 seconds. I mean, I know that's not your purview, and you're not like, haven't lived here forever, but have you ever timed it out there? Because I'm trying to feel how painful it is, what we're talking about. No?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rio, no, I've never timed that particular intersection. I'm trying to think of what a good comparison would be. I think a good comparison would be if you pull up on a side street, on Outer State Street, during the PM peak hour. There's about a two-minute cycle length, the time it takes to cycle through all the different movements up there. So if you arrive on a side street, just as your light turned red, you've probably got a good minute until that light comes back around to serve you. So that, that's one way to imagine what a...
Well, I should do the service to my constituents and go there at peak hour so I could feel what it feels like. But, but there is a psychology, isn't it, about you're driving, you're trying to get somewhere, maybe it feels worse than it, it feels longer than it really is when you're trying to get somewhere, right, to be held up. Okay.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You indicated that a two-lane option could keep the level of service B to 2035, is that what you said?
That's correct.
And is the cost of that the same? How does the cost fit in of the two-lane option as opposed to the one-lane option?
The two-lane option would also be funded, be able to be funded within the construction dollars available. The single lane would probably be less, and would be less, but both of them would still meet the test that we were looking at. Is it construction fundable for the options based on the amount of grant that we have available?
Okay. And could you describe, maybe put that, the aerial up again, and just describe what that two-lane option looks like, you know?
You know, I'm actually going to walk through.
Oh, we're there, okay. I'm sorry, you're getting interrupted again.
No, no, not a problem.
Mr. House?
So, let me be sure I understand. By the way, I was there the other day, and I was stopped back around Ealing's Park is where the queue began, and it took me more than, it took me a couple minutes, maybe more than that, probably about three minutes even, to get close to the intersection. And so these numbers here don't reflect the reality on the ground as it exists. And it was not a, you know, Friday summer thing, it was just one of the regular weeknights. When you say level of service will improve, obviously, with the traffic signal or with the roundabout, with the traffic signal, it improves for those people on Las Pocetus, right? But the people that normally would just come down and wait one, one car turn to get through coming any of the other two directions, they're going to have to wait for an entire, a whole long length of the queue. Their level of service is going to deteriorate dramatically, the few that there are, but they're going to now be caught in quite a wait as you let the queue get through with the traffic signal as opposed to the roundabout.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, that's a great point. These numbers that we're looking at here are intersection averages. So while it brings the overall intersection average down, it makes the southbound movement a lot better. What happens when there is a green light for that southbound movement is it going, it is going to hold up the other movements that would normally just come and go. The roundabout in that respect is a superior option because everybody gets served relatively quickly when they do arrive at the intersection.
And then, one of the things, I know you've got more presentation, but what I was expecting to see was another chart that would actually show what accident data would be expected here. For instance, on, you know, we have seen all over the nation 88% and more reduction in injury crashes, very, but 90% plus, almost 100% reduction in fatal accidents, and, you know, over the long, the lifespan of something like this. And also, I didn't see a chart anywhere in there that showed the emissions that would be reduced by using a roundabout as opposed to a traffic light. So, I mean, they can be very considerable, as I noticed. Do you have data that you could put up that would show us the safety factor of this? Because this is only one of the factors that goes into the, you know, in deciding which is right. I mean, a traffic signal at this kind of a T-bone kind of intersection is notorious over their lifespan versus what's available for a roundabout.
We don't have any data available to show you what could be. Generally speaking, though, yes, roundabouts are a more safe type of intersection. They have fewer crashes, and the crashes that do happen of them are typically less severe. The vehicles are moving at a slower speed, and they're approaching each other at a relative angle, so it's more of a sideswipe-type crash where traffic signals tend to be more broadside, T-bone-type crashes, which are typically more severe and result in more injuries. Right now, this intersection is relatively low crash because it is a stop condition. What we have had is a few people blow right through the intersection in the southbound direction. That has happened a few times. Some other intersections in the city that might be comparable to this, T-intersection-wise, are some of the intersections we have along Cabrillo, the beach, Cesar Chavez, Milpus, Caliport to Viarta. They have slower approach speeds heading towards the T, but they are relatively low crash rates as far as signalized intersections go. So it's impossible to really predict, but just saying in general, roundabouts tend to have fewer...
So you're saying that safety didn't really come into this consideration on which one of these were the ones that you were going to recommend?
No, based on delay is what, primarily what we're looking at.
Yeah, and then the auto emissions also didn't appear to come into the evaluation.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
I may be jumping ahead here. When we talk about lanes, to solve the problem that, I guess Mr. White, Mr. House pointed out, people coming down cliff who would normally just turn right on Las Pocetus, they wouldn't have to wait if there was in fact a right-hand turn lane there, as well as a straight-ahead lane. So that could resolve some of that problem. Is that included in some of our plans or suggestions here? Plus, they'd have a green arrow to turn right.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, yes, when we get to the slides that show the signal design, there is a right-turn lane planned for the traffic signal option.
And so we'd have a green arrow, we wouldn't have to wait?
There's different ways of doing it. The drawing we're going to show actually has what we call the channelized right-turn lane that actually splits the right off, and there's a stop sign there. But there are different ways of doing it, and we'll, we can show you that.
Thank you.
Why don't you go ahead and show, right, go right ahead.
Just to wrap up on a little bit of the last few months, following the work that was done by Penfield and Smith, we went back to TCC in November and laid out the options that are pretty much what you're seeing before you, and sought their advice on next steps to try and move forward. TCC was very strongly encouraging that we stick with the roundabout and go look for more money. So we did go back to attempt to ferret out opportunities that might exist, spoke with SB CAG staff about possibilities for additional funding to be allocated to this project, and we were not successful. At least in the avenues that we looked for and tried to identify, we were not getting any positive responses. So we went back to TCC to report that in May, and there was, I think, a healthy discussion, but once again, TCC really likes the roundabout, and they wish that there is a way to continue to achieve that as a goal for the project. So we are bringing this back to council for specifically a discussion on that issue and to lay out what, what information we have available to compare the two options and where we think we are. So, looking ahead, I'm locked up. I want to go. There we go. This is an aerial of the existing intersection as it appears today, and this, of course, is Cliff Drive, oops, and Las Pocetus. And this is an overlay of what the roundabout project would look like and how it would flow. So I hope you can see this. We wanted to try and help put it in a context that would make it visible. I think if I, oops, let me go back. Let me go back. There we go. You can see the red is attempting to sort of define the edges of the project, so you can kind of see the impact area. So the red line goes all the way up to this direction, comes back down along here, and this area would all need to be regraded, and so the issues of this length are dealing with some of those grading changes and drainage impacts. As you come in from the, essentially from the west, you would come into the roundabout like this. You could either take off toward Cliff or continue around to Las Pocetus. This area of pavement would be removed. The center area of the roundabout, we envision being landscaped or open. As you can see, coming from Cliff, you can continue north or you can continue around. And then, of course, coming southbound, same thing.
Is that round, in the roundabout? It seems quite large. Can you compare, can you give me a comparison to, for example, the Milpus or to Five Points? Because it just seems so large, and I don't, and could you explain why it has to be that large? Because it looks like there's a lot more work that needs to be done for, to be that large.
Madam Mayor, the Five Points Roundabout is a lot smaller than this one. It wasn't designed to accommodate the truck traffic that we know goes through this intersection. More close comparison would be the Hot Springs Roundabout. That one is fairly close to this size. If I could use the mouse here. What we call the inscribed circle length, kind of if you go all the way across the circle from edge to edge. Our consultant that we worked with found an optimum design of about 150 feet. There might be an opportunity to reduce that some, but just for comparison's sake, the Hot Springs Roundabout is between 130 and 150 feet, depending on which side of the roundabout you're measuring, so...
And the Milpus one?
The Milpus one's more of an egg-shaped, but it's 120 on one end and 130 on the other end.
And this is up to 150?
150.
So why is this one so much larger than the one at Milpus? I mean, I know it's egg-shaped, but is that why? Because it's a different shape?
It's where we're accommodating the truck movements within the roundabout. This design keeps most of the, and what we're talking about is semi-trailers, and as they move through the roundabout, the way their trailer drags behind them and the path that they take. In this case, the, most of the movement is going to take place on the pavement, and some of it, some of the back wheels of the semi-trailers actually hop up onto the, the truck apron, we call it, in the circle itself. One option is to reduce the overall size, but we'd have to make the apron larger, and we'd have to adjust the approach angles and everything. Our consultant, who designs roundabouts frequently, says it is possible, so this is just a starting point.
Would a smaller roundabout be less expensive in terms of construction? Because that's the big-ticket item.
Right, there would be some savings, but order of magnitude, we're still looking at, close to what we are right now.
Okay. So, just so I'm clear, the Hot Springs and the Milpus Roundabout are about 130 feet. They seem to work for, I mean, they were just constructed, the Hot Springs one, so that is adequate for the semi-trucks, right?
Yes.
Okay. And this is larger than that?
This is larger.
Okay. Okay. Mr. House?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Has, since we talked about comparative pricing between the two systems from the beginning, is this, is the design of this consistent with what we considered in the beginning as well? So we're not talking about a difference in scale, of size of project? I mean, it's apple for apple. Somehow, this is much more expensive now.
This is quite close to what was considered originally. There's been some tweaks to the approach angles and everything, but the overall shape of the roundabout is...
The shape and size is so consistent.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. House?
Yeah, it'd be real, I appreciate the mayor's question about this because I was looking at the Maryland Department of Highways, and they, they show roundabouts at major interchanges that are significantly smaller than this, and they show the tractor trailers getting around just fine. And this, when I saw this drawing, I was really surprised at how large it seemed. And I, we've known from looking at, like, there's a fellow down in Australia that designs roundabouts, and we've worked with him, and there's some others that have done them. And there's gold-plated roundabouts, and there's really down, simple ones that are used often in rural settings, and they work really, really well. But I was looking at the numbers, and this one here, you've got that up at one, almost $2 million or something, right? 1.8 or something? 1.9? These are the numbers that are not that old. You know, 386,000, 194,000, 493, 464, 472,000. The most expensive ones that I was seeing were in the, there was one that was 1.7, but it was like a major, big, gigantic multi, multi. There's 735,000, a recent one built in Topeka. The average for the United States up to the early part, like around 2000, was around 250,000, and the ones that came where you had a major junction at that point was 500,000. Now, you know, time has passed, but these other ones are really recent Carmel. I mean, they were, they're doing them for a fraction of the price that you have here. And I mean recently. And they have a program to put roundabouts through the entire city in lots of different places. Many, some of the places are almost identical to this, and they're just a fraction of the cost that you're showing us here. So we've only had one designer, is that right? This is based on one design firm's suggestion, and yet we're hanging our decision based on their pretty high cost. I mean, it's close to what they did up in Galida, but that one even there is pretty intensely engineered. What we, what makes you think that this is the optimal design for this? And how many other competing design firms have you considered, given our limited funding?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, the roundabout design firm we're working with, Kittleson, they've, they're out of Oregon, and they're a national leader in roundabout design. They're among the best. They, they've told me that this is a starting point. If we do move into final design with the roundabout, there are tweaks that can be made. We can reduce the size. There are impacts to that. Another consideration, not only the trucks, is the speed at which vehicles are traveling around the circle, and it all plays together. It's an iterative process when you're designing it. Because there is an optimum speed at which drivers travel through roundabouts so that they're able to navigate correctly. If they're traveling too fast, it can be hazardous to pedestrians trying to cross. There's not enough time to react for other drivers trying to enter the roundabout. So all these things play together, the speed, the size of the vehicles that they're trying to accommodate. It all plays together. That being said, they, they thought this was the optimum design, but they did admit that it could be reduced in size, but there would have to be some tweaks here and there.
Right. And speed is really important because there are pedestrians here that are near here, and the smaller the roundabout, I understand, the slower the design speed, is that correct?
The smaller the roundabout, the slower the design speed, but the smaller the roundabout does affect the angles at which the approach roads enter the roundabout. And with the smaller roundabout, actually can increase the approach speed. So again, it's an iterative process, so with the, with the faster approach speeds, it makes it necessary to flare the roads out further to create a kind of reverse curve entering, which increases the cost of the approach road, so...
But what I'm understanding is that you've only gone to one firm for a design, and the design came back significantly higher than what you... the design came back significantly higher than we have allocated, we have funds that we could allocate to it. So, this is something, when we get to comment, I'm definitely going to ask you, why haven't you gone and gotten competing bids from additional firms that would actually, or began to show us a design that would fit our budget? Given that that's being done already all over the United States in real time, like, not like in the far past, but currently. So, we can talk about that more later.
Is this, given that relinquishment has really just been approved, is this roundabout to Caltrans standards? Are there different standards that we would have for a city road? Does it matter?
Madam Mayor, the, um, Caltrans would require us to design a roundabout so that it accommodates the truck traffic. We could back off that as a city street if we knew that there were no trucks going through this roundabout, but because we know that some of the commercial around Cliff and Miggs uses large semi-trailers to make deliveries, we would have to accommodate those trucks and design the roundabout to the same standard.
Okay. So, besides the, the use of the roundabout, which I'm not disputing, obviously trucks need to get to the Mesa and use this route, it makes sense. But in terms of the design and other aspects and the cost associated with, I know there was a lot of oversight cost, and if it was, if it was still State Route 225, I'm sure Caltrans would have been involved in this somewhat, and they're, they're no longer going to be. So, what kind of changes, if any, would you expect, given that it's no longer a state road?
Well, it eliminates a layer of review, so.
And what's the cost associated with that, do you think?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, the, the cost estimates that are reflected here don't presume the Caltrans overview or their involvement. By 2015, we anticipate that the transaction of the jurisdiction would be completed.
But did you, when you made the cost estimates before? I mean, this is an updated cost estimate based on?
We've been, we've been going back and forth, as you know, with Caltrans about what, what their involvement in this project was going to look like. I think when, when it comes down to doing final design and review and approval, if it were a Caltrans jurisdiction, they would still have that review authority for the project. We, um, we obviously are using federal funding for the project itself, but beyond that, the, the expectation about the permitting process and the reviews are really focused on what we would expect to be doing at a local level.
Okay. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not to pile on here, but, um, you, you mentioned the Hot Springs Roundabout. Was this designed by the same folks that designed the Hot Springs Roundabout?
Uh, yes. Kittleson did, did the design.
Well, I don't know what other people's experience has been, but first off, that sort of channelized approach, I see people approaching that thing all the time, and you can see they're going like, "What?" And I don't think it works, to be honest. It, to me, it's, uh, they, they try to make it real apparent where you should go, and in the process, it's confusing. So, so the principle of simpler is better. I mean, round, go around, you know? Arc de triomphe, go around. No channels with the cobblestones this way or that, so. I mean, I just throw that out, but I think that that really works, and maybe could save us some money. Last thing you wanted to hear, I'm sure, but, I mean, the, our experience with what exists from this group, see, you're coming, uh, east on Cliff there, you see they have that bulbout thing? Well, I mean, what, sorry, bulbout, I didn't mean to use that word, but it is. That's already like, "What?" And then, if I, if I'm living over in Allen Road, I'm going like, "What? They're going to make this road 20 feet closer to my house? Not a popular idea." Anyway, so on. Just things to think about there. Thanks, Eric.
I think you still have some other slides. We don't have.
I do. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Moving along, this once agi, this once again is the same aerial base that we were looking at as the existing conditions. This is the overlay of what the signalized intersection could look like, and this is showing the one-lane southbound, not the two-lane, but you can see, basically, the, the limits are pulled in somewhat. We, we would not need to be going through the grading changes in this area, so it pulls back the, um, the area of impact. We would be removing paving along this area and, um, potentially have some landscaping opportunities along both sides where this former removal occurred. Beyond that, um, I think, um, we've, we've kind of walked through the operational characteristics for how this would work as well. If you have any questions about that, we can respond to those now.
Mr. White?
Just to repeat that, talk to us more specifically about that two-lane business, please.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, uh, this alternative that we've shown right now has a dedicated southbound left-turn lane and a dedicated southbound right-turn lane. What would likely be in place if we had two southbound left-turn lanes? That southbound lane furthest to the west, closest to the creek, would probably be a shared lane, a shared right and left-turn lane, because the, the relative demand for that right-turn lane isn't that great. Some of the, um, other things to consider here, when we put this together, um, one, one thing we'd heard is avoid mastarms if possible. So, what this does by putting the islands on the northwest corner and as well the, um, the median on the east leg of the intersection, it gives us places to put, um, light posts and the, only the, the 10-foot-high traffic signal poles, so that we can avoid using mastarms. If we go to the dual-left option, we do have to have mastarms. There's, there's no way around that. So, th- this is just in, um, a concept, schematic.
And, um, during all the 225 conversations, one of the costs associated that we had discussed had to do with traffic signals and maintenance of those traffic signals. Now, the cost estimate you have here is just construction, correct?
That's correct.
What is the ongoing cost of a traffic signal there?
It's typically about $5,000 a year.
It's five, okay. So, it's five. And, okay. So, that's negligible, really. Mr. Hotchkiss and then Mr. House.
Does this reflect that second, uh, right-turn lane for Cliff here? You know what we were talking about before, if we had the line? In other words, if we, you know, so, just sort of a free right-turn lane?
Oh.
Yes. I'm just going to use the mouse here. Right up here at the end of the red lines.
Yeah.
There's actually a drainage feature that goes under the road. We want to avoid that if possible. That's a, that's an added expense. But beyond that, this does open up into separate right-turn lanes. Where did my mouse go?
No, I'm talking about coming off, westbound off of Cliff. Yeah.
Over here?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Yes. It stays the same.
So, it stays the same?
Yeah. So, there's, if you, if you're coming back from Mesa Lane area, there's two westbound lanes. The, the curb lane actually turns into the right-turn lane.
Okay. And that's the one that could have a fleet, free flow right if we could?
It won't be free flow. We, we do want to bring that traffic to the intersection and turn it around the corner slowly. There was, there used to be, you can actually see it in the aerial.
Yeah, that lane there, right?
That old free-flow lane, um, Caltrans took out a number of years ago. There, there isn't enough room here to have a true free-flow type merge situation. We'd have to have a lot more space in order to bring those two lanes together. So, that westbound right-turn lane, we do want to bring into the intersection and have it turn the corner slowly.
So, would there be a green arrow there or something?
Yep. Okay. We call it an overlap, so there'll be a southbound left-turn green arrow, and at the same time, there'll be a westbound right-turn arrow.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. House?
Don't tell this to Allen Road residents. They love that right-hand turn off of Las Pecitas coming southbound. I mean, they love it, like, as in, they said little things like, "Don't you dare let them take away our right-hand turn lane." So, why are you taking away the right, the free right-hand turn there?
It, it's not a free right-turn lane right now. It is stop.
Come to a stop and yield.
You do come to a stop.
They see it as free.
We, we want to preserve that, um, in the sense that there is.
What they do right now is they get into the bike lane, and they use the bike lane to bypass the traffic, and then they go into that lane.
Right. And, and we, we want to provide a dedicated right-turn lane, so that's why we've provided a little bit more room and width here. But we're bringing them down to the intersection, and they will, again, turn the intersection, turn right at a better angle. Right now, when they're turning right, you can see in the aerial itself, the angle at which they're approaching the intersection causes them to really look over their shoulder to see if there's any traffic.
Right.
And once it's a traffic signal, the potential for traffic to be traveling through that intersection at a higher speed is greater. So, at, presently, it, it's not as big a deal, because it is a stop-controlled intersection, and everybody's leaving that intersection from a stop.
Right.
But once the potential is there for faster speeds, it's, it's better to have that approach angle closer to 90 degrees.
I see. And the, the question I have, the big question I have is about the approach speed for the whole intersection, and what happens when somebody comes to the bottom side of it. So, I understand with the roundabout, there's a deflection that begins to create that, I mean, it's naturally designed into roundabouts, not just a traffic circle like they used to make. It's got this deflection thing coming in, and it slows things down. So, the, the speed of Las Pecitas is posted at 55, I think, right? And so, coming into a T-intersection like this, what, talk to me about safety here, comparative safety, once again. When they come down to this T-intersection, coming off 55, and there's a stoplight, they may or may not see it, somebody might still be in the intersection, what's going to happen there with a, with a traffic light?
Uh, well, at any traffic signal, there's always the potential for rear ends, and the faster speed is approaching from the rear, the greater the potential damage. Things we can do is warning signs, rumble strips, that kind of thing, to let traffic know that there is, um, a stop condition coming up ahead. Typically, uh, what we would try to do is, um, you know, place some traffic signals on the streetlight posts higher up, so that people can see them, but the, the risk is definitely there, that there, there likely will be, um, more rear ends, and that's something we would expect with a traffic signal versus a roundabout.
And, uh, again, I tried to prepare myself for today. And Carmel, they did a study of, of similar intersections, and they have their 96th Street, 916th Street. Those are, those are ones that actually have a kind of similar, they've got the traffic signals. And then, they have two roundabouts that they built, one at 126th and one 131st Street. And they've got 25% of their accidents and 33% of their accidents at the signals are injury accidents, and only five and, only six and nine percent at the roundabouts. And they, they did a study on how much it costs for each one of the accidents, and at the signalized intersections, it's 13,600 on average and 7,300 on average, and at the roundabout, they're only about 2,500 in accident. And this, and I was looking around, and it's pretty significant. And what's surprising to me still is that you're not considering safety in the equation that you're bringing to us today, and I think it's really an important factor.
We don't have any other lights on, if you had anything else you wanted to present.
I have one more. The biggie.
Here's the.
This is the cost estimate slide, and this is just, uh, a depiction of the elements of the costs that we're looking at. As I said, we have 750,000 that is committed to construction dollars. So, we are going to be, uh, as a city, paying for the design costs as, as we sit. The preliminary design work that has been completed is the $45,196. That's spent. That's, that's gone. The final design for the traffic signal is estimated at 80,000, and for the roundabout, it's estimated at 200,000. The community outreach design costs.
Can you explain the difference of why? $120,000 difference?
The, the complexity, I think, in the roundabout is tied into the grading requirements, and as Derek was pointing out, it's the angle and the, um, design aspects that affect the grading. We would probably do very little grading change for the intersection signalization project. So, that's one of the biggies. There are also drainage issues that are affected by those drainage changes that go into that cost, and, um, lighting issues that also are reflective of, of the need for that type of project. So, those are the types of elements that go into, and, and you'll see some of those, I think, down below in the costs for the construction as well. The design, as I mentioned, the, uh, there really isn't a right-of-way issue that we have with this particular project, but we have environmental review for both. We have permitting requirements, and the level of outreach would probably be similar with both projects. But, um, I think going back to the overheads that, um, we were, we were looking at, some of the issues that would be part of the environmental review are looking at, um, some of the things Councilmember House brought up relative to emissions, and also the proximity to drainage features and, um, those kinds of things. So, it's, it's, there's a level of complexity that's a little greater with the roundabout. The construction costs, we're looking at an allowance of 645,000 for the traffic signal, as I mentioned. This would allow for the two-lane southbound approach if we ended up going with a design for a traffic signal that reduced, that to one southbound lane, it would be a reduced construction cost as well. The roundabout cost of 1.4 million is actually one that we looked at, and, and, as we said, it's, it's a reasonable cost as far as going through and look at the, at the elements included in that design. And we also did look at the Los Canarios and, um, Kyrel, uh, roundabout that, um, was bid and awarded last April. So, April of 2012, um, that cost estimate came in at 1.24 million. The, the average, I think they had five bids, um, the average bid was one, of the bids is 1.43. So, we're in that ballpark, looking at, um, a project that was bid a year ago and, and forecasting that we'll, we're talking about an award that will happen two years from now.
How big is that roundabout?
It's similar.
It's about the same size as what we're looking at.
It's a three-leg.
It's a three-lane, so, oh, three-leg, right. All right.
The construction management inspection, um, once again, the complexity of the grading and the additional work relative to the, the roundabout is what increases those costs as well. And then, testing and, and the minor costs associated with both projects give you the comparable, um, construction costs overall and the design and, and preparation costs overall. So, the 750,000 is the, as I said, grant amount that we're dealing with. That leaves, for the traffic signal option, 100,000, that would still be required by the city to cover the costs of the design and the permitting. The costs of the construction are anticipated to be covered by that, um, grant amount. For the roundabout, we're estimating that the additional cost for the city, for the, the design and permitting, would be 250,000, and, uh, the remaining costs associated with construction would be about 905,000. So, that's how the differences are split. So, we're still looking, regardless of the option, at a commitment of additional city resources of at least 100,000 for that, for this project going forward. And we're bringing this back to you with a recommendation for the traffic signal option, and we're doing that primarily for pragmatic reasons. We feel that we have two alternatives that do address the city's, um, standards for level of service operation, which is Level of Service C. We do have a current problem with the, um, capacity at that intersection, and we have a, uh, STIP budgeted amount for the construction in fiscal year 1516. If we aren't able to move forward and utilize those STIP dollars, there's a risk. And we are in a point where we can recommend and follow through and implement a traffic signal improvement at this intersection. If we want to go with a roundabout, at this point, we have no obvious option for how to find additional funding to support those costs, and that puts the, a level of uncertainty, both in terms of the timing and being able to address this intersection concern, and the likelihood that the 750,000 that's been committed. the likelihood that the $750,000 that's been committed will continue to erode in value as time wears on. So I think from a staff level, we have, there are a lot of reasons why a roundabout is attractive and has, has interest for, for a continued approach, but we bring this to you because at this point, we don't have a way to fund it. And we feel that the estimates that we're providing are reasonable estimates, that while we can look at trying to adjust them, the landscaping, for example, that is part of that, that estimate, because we're hopeful that the, the internal part of it would be able to be landscaped and some of the edges, is only about $100,000. So it's not like there are phases that we could hold off and do at a later time that would measurably alter those, those estimates. So with that, we're here to answer any further questions, and hear your discussion.
Thank you. And I don't see any speaker slips, okay? Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Ms. Anderson, I asked a question before with a, with a point, and that was if that design had changed from the initial concept for the roundabout. Because if I, if I heard your presentation correctly, initially, both options were about the same cost-wise. Yet here we are these years later, and the one option is still within the ballpark and the other one's totally out of the ballpark. So I'm really confused on why that would be, why they both wouldn't either rise up. And in fact, in what we've seen with a lot of our projects, such a favorable bidding climate, and this, this thing just got knocked out of the game. And I'm, I'm a little bit at a loss to, to explain why that is. I wonder if you could help me out with that?
I wasn't here, excuse me, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Rouse, I wasn't here 12 years ago, so I'm, I'm going off of what is in the record or what I believe was the circumstance. I think we'd also have to look at what the design consideration was for the traffic signal at that time. Because that, that, if they were, looked at as comparable, back then, looking at a traffic signal for $750,000 would have been a pretty substantial intersection signalization project. So I'm not that comfortable with some of the assumptions that may have gone into that estimate at the time, I guess is what I'm saying. And roundabouts have been evolving over time as well. I think as, as we were looking at this cost estimate, and especially, we were able to take advantage of looking at what the most recent GLEDA estimate was about. Their, their engineer's estimate was about $1.54 million, and so they got good bids on that project. So it's, it's still kind of keeping a sense of size and scope, not outside the, the realm of, of reasonableness. I think when, once again, you look at the signalized intersection, it's a much more scaled-back type of project. It involves utilization of most of the existing pavement in the intersection, and those are the kinds of things that are driving costs of the comparable options.
Well, I would agree that the signalization of that intersection is going to be an improvement over status quo, there's no question about that, but as, and I think as you agree on staff, the roundabout would have been the absolute best option, I'm a little, little reticent to let go of it, frankly.
If my memory serves, 12 years ago, the proposal was for a roundabout, not a traffic signal, and the traffic signal issue only came up because of a cost issue over time. So the $750,000 was never really thought of for a traffic signal.
I believe my understanding of the record is that the two options were looked at, and there was no discernible difference in the cost, so it was preferable to go with the roundabout. There wasn't seemingly a discussion in that history of a much less costly option plus the roundabout and the decision, that's my understanding of the record.
Okay. Mr. House?
Yeah, I, I almost would have agreed with you, Mr. Rouse, about this being a better option than what we have now. But the more I've looked at it, I don't agree. The current situation caught, because of the congestion, causes people to, there may be rearenders that we don't know about further up the way from time to time, but because of it being so congested at those peak periods, it probably reduces the accident potential pretty significantly. I, I just can only imagine, just one major turning movement, but it's just hugely cued, slows the whole operation down. But with a traffic signal, you're going to have a clear situation where somebody's going to come barreling down there, trying to make that light. And they're going to do it because they don't want to have to wait for the next one. And that's going to be, that's fatality written all over it. And I'm looking at the statistics, 90% fewer fatal crashes in Arizona, 72% fewer fatal crashes nationwide, 87% fewer crashes overall at two-way stops that are, over two-way stops that are controlled like this. I mean, it's just, it's, it's not small. All over the nation, there's an attempt to move away from this kind of a thing, signalized intersections, because of their potential for danger. This is a dangerous kind of situation when you put a traffic signal at a T-bone like this, and you're just asking for fatalities. I don't think it's going to be better, I think it's going to be worse, from a safety perspective. Yes, from a congestion perspective, it would definitely improve it. The costs that we're looking at, and one study that was done in Topeka on a roundabout that cost $735,855 just recently, they did a study on it to find out over its 30-year life, they tried to project out what the real costs were. And yes, for the maintenance, it was a small improvement, like $90,000 saved by having the roundabout. But the other costs were pretty significant. The, the cost that they projected for it on accidents there would be $313,000 over that 30 years versus $4.3 million with, with an intersection that signaled control, trolled. They looked at the overall cost of the signalized, signalized intersection, it was going to cost them a total, from a municipal perspective, around $7.1 million, and 300, in case anybody cares, 399 million pounds of carbon dioxide using the intersection, using the signalized intersection, versus, versus a fraction of that with the roundabout. These things really count. I don't want to see us take this money and put good money after bad, and create a more dangerous situation with a traffic signal, when we all know that this thing here, with the freeright turns that kind of get folded into a roundabout, and the safety that's provided for the bicyclists and for the pedestrians using the facility, I mean, we know that we can create roundabouts that serve the big trucks. Heck, we have the big city buses going through Five Points Roundabout. I mean, I'm not saying it should be that small. We've seen smaller, more modestly designed, with the wider apron, not the hardscape, where they actually, the big trucks go up on the apron and the whole thing gets smaller, they're able to do it, and, and you know, the cars don't do that, but the, the trucks can. So I just, I really think we need to go with our, if, if you had the political will to go to $1 million or whatever it might take, to invest a little bit more on our part, and you went forward and said, "Design us a roundabout that fits in our budget", I bet you there's somebody out there that can do it. It's way different from going the, this other way around. Sure, they can spend the money we don't have, and I don't think we should. I think we should get a roundabout in there that really is somewhere near our budget, and it meets the needs here. But I will not support a signalized intersection here. That is just setting people up for, for terrible, terrible injury accidents, and I'm not, I just can't support it.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I'm gratified at my fellow Councilmember House's extensive research here in traffic engineering. But we do have a lot of traffic signals in town. I don't think they're that dangerous. And I remember looking at this years ago, and I supported the idea of the roundabout at the time because we actually had enough room for a functional roundabout in that area, and we were told at the time that it would cost the same as a signal, so why not use the roundabout? It seemed like a good idea. Well, now the situation that we're looking at, and I personally have no reason to doubt the numbers that staff is giving us, but if somebody else has a rational reason for doing that, I'd like to hear about it. Now we're looking at a situation where we have almost all the money necessary to create a signalized intersection, and again, we have a lot of signalized intersections in town. I don't think of them as a danger. Or we can commit to building a roundabout that we don't have the money to pay for. And I'd like to remind everybody that we just recently voted to acquire 225 at an extra maintenance cost of $400,000 annually. Are we going to also find an additional $1 million for this intersection because we don't like traffic signals? To me, it just seems irrational, I don't get it. I understand liking the idea of roundabouts. In, in the right location, they work great, and this is that location. But there's also a question of costs, and I think we, as a council, have to be conscious of that. The incremental improvement that we would get from a roundabout over a traffic signal at this location is not worth a million dollars to me, and I don't think it's worth a million dollars to most of the people in the city.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I basically agree with Mr. Francisco's analysis there. This, I've been looking at this intersection since we've been, for all my time on Planning Commission, and the discussions have gone on about this intersection, and I, I agree that this is, there couldn't be a better location for a roundabout, as both in terms of, of function, also in terms of sort of fitting into the area, where the park, the parks, open space, the roundabout would be just such a better fit from that perspective. So all, for all those reasons, I definitely prefer a, a roundabout. But we're hearing that not only is there this limited amount of money available, but that it does have a sort of a, a shelf life. And so we need to be attentive to that, and we're, we're making real-world decisions every week, and in particular, on our road system. We just are underfunded road system. And I would say that if we could even sort of hearken back to the, to the starvation that we are, that not, and we, not just as a city, but as a nation, are, are inflicting on our road system. Because we, we know what the optimal solution is, and I appreciate Mr. House's eloquent, passionate advocacy for the roundabout. And, and my recollection is that Mr. House was active in the, in the birth of the Milpus Roundabout, and, which was so controversial at the time, because the skepticism, I can tell you, was just enormous. I mean, this was like, so I really appreciate that he fights hard for, for that, for that goal. But I come back to making sensible, real-world decisions, week in, week out, and I, I support moving forward with the signal at this time. And I also appreciate, well, and then there's one element there that, that is interesting. To improve traffic flow, we need a mast arm to go with the two, two-lane southbound. And that does that, and that would take us to, to Level of Service B in 2035. And so, and that, yet that's, I have to say, that mast arm is offensive to me as a, it does not, it is not compatible with the parks. I mean, just if you look at it and the whole, the whole feel of it. But we also need to be looking at traffic flow, 2035 is, it, once upon a time, I used to think that was a date way off in the future. Well, it's, we need to be planning for 2035, and Level of Service B there, so I would be supportive of the, of the, of the two-lane, southbound mast arm compromise approach. And I, I, also, I apologize for the sort of open season on messenger's approach that we took with our staff today. I, I, I trust your judgment, and I think we, you've been through it hard with this, and I, I know that you've studied this hard to see whether there were ways to make this less expensive. Perhaps this would be inappropriate, Madam Mayor's going to speak.
Okay. I actually have a question, and it's related to actually Mr. House's homework here and to what Mr. White was saying. It seems like there have been other roundabouts in similar areas, Carmel, I've heard, or Kansas or something, that are substantially less cost for some reason. Can you comment as to why that, why this discrepancy might be? And I guess if we were to ask to see if there was something that still fits with the criteria with the trucks, and you know, I don't want to, how you cut a corner on a roundabout, but you know what I mean? You know, what the timeline would be to see if there are alternate designs available at less cost? Because what I'm hearing from my colleagues is that if the funding was available, we'd go for the roundabout, and it's really just about the cost. And so I guess the question is, do we absolutely must abide by this particular design and this particular roundabout, or are there other options out there? And what would it take, and how long would it take to find that out? Unless you know right now?
I'm going to take a stab, and Derek obviously can jump in as well. We've, we've looked at and talked about what, what things could we do to tighten it up, to make it smaller, or, or make the project smaller? And I think, as, as I think Derek's pointed out, we think there are things that we would look for and, and consider the trade-offs in terms of how the operation worked, but there's still not a significant change in the cost. If we knocked $200,000 as a, as a target, looking at what kinds of things we might be able to adjust, we're still talking about $900,000 of, of gap. That's, that's the challenge. We don't see a way that we can bring this down a million dollars, and...
So how, how do you, how do you recognize, how do you address Mr. House's homework here of, of other roundabouts in areas in California even?
I think the reality when you...
I want to clarify, you're talking about Carmel, Indiana, correct?
Okay, good, well, good.
That's the city that, I've been to Carmel, Indiana.
I mean, they still drive cars there the same way they drive cars here, so I don't think if it's...
But I think, it's a city that's well-known for roundabouts in the Midwest, and has built a lot of them. I've actually been there, and they have a lot of roundabouts, but it's generally flat territory with a lot of, you know, four, your classic roundabout, there are the four intersections. But I don't think you're talking about, unless Mr. House wants to clarify, Carmel, or Carmel, California.
Yeah, it's a good, that's a good, Jim. When I looked it up on the internet, I saw Carmel, I thought it was Carmel in California, to be honest with you. What I did see was the aerial view of the different roundabouts, and you can see it online, and you'll see that there's, the ones that are in the sort of rural segments are really similar, and they, they, there's not a lot of constraints there. And these kinds of situations like this are, and we're looking at just, you know, fractions, you know, in terms of cost, but even the most expensive one that I was finding, that was sort of in the same genre, was $735,000, $7,035, $700,000. So that's, you know, still, I mean, there's some sort of a magnitude thing here that bothers me, and I, and that's why I raised the issue so passionately. You know, there's the, there's the other approach, where you put the pile of tires in the middle of the intersection, let them go around it. But somewhere in between is a roundabout that could very well come close to our budget. And that's why I'm, I'm kind of surprised, and I, I'm not trying to attack the messenger except to say, "Why aren't you looking a little farther?" I mean, we don't just look to GLEDA and see what they had to pay. You know, that's how they designed it, that's what they paid. But there are roundabouts being built in the United States today that are in places, this is really unconstrained. I mean, you know, if you go down in the downtown area and put a roundabout, they can cost more. But right here, you've got a lot of flexibility here, and you could build a roundabout here, I believe, from what I've seen, for a fraction of what you're bringing to us. I'm wondering where that, that extra research, that extra effort is, and consistent with what the mayor's saying. Not just to be stupid about it, but it's being done today, in real, in real time.
So I guess my question is, given, and maybe Mr. House can send you all the links and the, you know, whatever, but what kind of timeline do you think is it worth coming back? Just to be sure that, is this it, or are there other options out there?
Madam Mayor and council, I think what we're dealing with is a more constrained location, so we do have to deal with the, with, with what this geographic location includes, and there are drainage issues that are some of the more obvious ones, but each location has to be kind of tested with its own construction constraints. And, and I think this is, we all, we all agree, I believe, this is the more elegant solution. This is, this is, this is a beautiful-looking, potentially beautiful-looking project. We can go back and try to look and, and, and work with the consultants on what kinds of things could we adjust, and what kind of things can we potentially reduce and try to vet what the trade-offs would look like, because there could be costs associated with dealing with those trade-offs. And, and, and obviously, if council asked us to do that, we would, we would do it wholeheartedly. I would say we're probably taught... I would say we're probably talking about at least another couple of months to be able to do that kind of a quick vet. I would be, we're not going to, I believe, come back with a fraction of the cost of what we're showing you. And certainly, I would say, we can, we can walk through and get more specific about how the constructibility and the impact of that relates to those costs. We, we would want council to feel confidence in the information we're sharing with you and where it comes from. But it's, it is important to have a locally-designed view of the project. And we look at, obviously, other types of projects in other parts of the country. But they still have to come back to what we're dealing with in this location and how it fits. So, we're here for guidance in your direction.
Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first of all, I'd like to appreciate the email that came from Keith Kaufman-Grey of the Transportation and Circulation Committee. And that committee really did talk about this in earnest. And he's right, that the staff report that we have today implied that the group had sort of a secondary recommendation, well, if you can't do the roundabout, you can do the traffic signal. And they pointedly really wanted to put forward the roundabout scenario. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that, because I was there in the room. Mr. Bailey, and did you talk about whether if Hillside House is built out, or if Veronica Meadows comes back with some, some kind of housing project? Were those traffic estimates part of this analysis?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, yes, they were. The delay figures that we showed assumed kind of a high-growth scenario in the area. There could be a low-growth scenario, not as much development, in which case, all the delays would come down. But yes, the delays we showed assumed the high growth and the development you mentioned.
And forgive me if I missed you talking about ongoing maintenance. Are they similar, the roundabout and the traffic signal choices, options?
The traffic signal averages about $5,000 a year. Roundabout's typically less. You're more looking at just landscape maintenance, which, depending on how it's landscaped, can be, can be costly. But typically, it's less, less than $5,000 a year.
So, the roundabout would save us a little money in ongoing costs?
A little.
A little, okay. So, if we were really to go for the roundabout, and we wanted to find a million dollars, is there some capital reserves somewhere? Mr. Armstrong?
I mean, the first place we would look would be street funding. And as Councilmember White said, you know, there's, there's a lot more projects. I mean, you could fund it out of general fund reserves as well, that would be the other option. But, I mean, if you were to direct us to come back and say, where would you find the money? We would come back, and we would tell you, we'd give you options about what we would, you know, we'd look at the six-year CIP, and we would, you know, reduce projects that we have there, or we would also come back with general fund.
Well, maybe that's a good idea, if I could float that to the council today. Because we aren't really being presented with financing options. And then, the public would know too, okay, we're, we're going to take money away from this, or general fund reserves, that sounds pretty precious to me. So, we could have a discussion about, if we go for this, we're not funding something else. So, if things aren't going to change in the next month or so, maybe we can ask for some, some financing options. So, I, I think I'll let that hang out there for a minute. But I really do appreciate what Councilmember House has been saying. The safety issue, we should consider that. And if, and if money is the only question, then let's dig a little deeper and see where we might find the money, if, if we're not in a terrible hurry. I'm not, thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think that, at least those watching this discussion would say that we have, we're exploring every option, that's for sure. And I, but I did want to make one point, that the, about, Ms. Anderson described it as drainage, there are drainage issues here. This isn't, we're not looking at an intersection where there's three cornfields coming together. This is, this is in the coastal zone. The Mesa Creek is to the, is to our bottom, to the lower portion, where the city invests, the city with all kinds of various fundings, spent something like $3 million daylighting a creek that had been stuck in a drainpipe for X number of decades. On the left is a Royal Borough Creek, which is a severely altered creek. But again, it's, it's a, in direct contrast to being just a, just an open, unconstrained site, it's, it's actually a, a real, a very delicate site, and a sensitive site. And I can imagine that environmental review could be a real concern here. So, and again, nobody's disputing the, what's the preferred option. I think this is emblematic of our, our nation's transportation system, and we see the best option here, and we don't have them. And I, and I respectfully don't support the going into reserves or general fund, or robbing other desperately needing, needy projects to fund this. Unfortunately, I do think that the, the way forward is this less beautiful option.
Mr. Hachkis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I want to live in the realm of probability, or even what's assured here. And I sure don't want to touch any reserves for this. Maybe five years down the line, or three years, and we're really in Fat City, we can think of that, but we're not right now. And yeah, I guess the roundabout could be better, but, or maybe would be better, but I think all those people that are waiting a minute or two going home will be vastly appreciative of getting this online and in the mix right away. So, I would like to go forward with the planning for the traffic light.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
There's a second?
Second.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I, you know, as, one reason I asked again about the original design, because as I look at the surrounding parts of the roadwork being done, from the curb extension, whatever you want to call it, to the different kinds of intrusion into the surrounding properties, I can easily see that that kind of money would have to be expended to make a project of that, of that scope. I don't know how it was ever in the other realm, frankly, with that much going on. And as much as I agree with my colleagues up here, the roundabout's the best way to go, I can't support the hunt for the extra, extra million dollars. I'm going to have to be, I'll be supporting the signal.
Mr. House?
Just from Mr. White's point, and I appreciate what you're saying about the area. Just even with this larger version that's up on the screen right now, you can see that it pulls the development away from the, the area that we've been trying to protect and restore. It's, it's really important. And in terms of the, fitting this particular area of our community, which is a unique intersection, there are not a lot like this in Santa Barbara, with that high-speed traffic coming down to a dead end, or to a T. This is a very unique situation. But even that said, that's why I really am wishing that the council would give it just a little bit more time, and have our staff do that little bit more, roll up the sleeves, and take a look at some other places, and see, how in the world are they doing it for less? And to see how a design here, and in fact, I think it could be designed without the silver, you know, plating, and actually get it down to a very rudimentary design for now, and later, if funds were available, a roundabout could then be enhanced or, you know, embellished at some point. There are ways to get the functionality out of it, without it having be, be just a super-engineered one, like the one we have in Montecito. So, I know that this is something, you're feeling urgency to move forward on. I don't think a couple of months would hurt us to have them take another look. We all here agree that the roundabout, just in principle, would be better. I think a smaller one, and one that maybe could be, we could lift up something from another community who's done it for significantly less, and get the benefit of it. So, anyway, I wouldn't support the motion, as you can imagine. But I'd hope that there'd be another option that might come forward here as we, as we look forward. Thanks.
Ms. Mario.
Thank you. So, if we build the traffic signal now, it's not likely, when we get to Fat City, we would change it out for a roundabout. Is that right? That, that doesn't make sense, does it? Mr. Bailey's like-
Whatever four councilmembers want to do.
Oh, okay. I'll be voting no. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
There's all this talk about Fat City. If you want a Fat City, in terms of revenue, to overcome all the structural and capital improvements we need, we need a new revenue source. And that is something that, that the community needs to say we want and vote for. So, I, there's, there's no point, there's no rise in TOT and sales tax that's going to get us to a point to get the additional amount of money that we're talking about for this project, let alone everything else that we need to do in terms of road maintenance. So, I, you know, I, I appreciate the passion of Mr. House here. And I think if the, and I'm kind of surprised that there's no public comment. And I appreciate the TCC and their unanimous desire for the roundabout. I think the vote would be unanimous up here for a roundabout, if not for the cost issue. And it's a cost issue, and that's a community-wide issue, in terms of what do we want in, in terms of the amenities and the services of the city that cost money. And so, I'm going to go for the motion. However, I'm going to ask staff to at least take Mr. House's information, and maybe just spend a little bit of time, you know, researching. And if by some miracle, you find some great information, the funding, the $750,000 won't even be available to us for two years. So, if something should come up, or someone who's listening to this saying, I could do this at $1 million, you know, we could probably get $250,000 to pay for a roundabout. We have a little bit of time to do that. And I know you need some direction, so I'm going to give you the direction with the information we have. But I do ask if you could do that, in terms of looking at this information. And if by some reason, some new information comes up, and yes, it can be done under a much better cost scenario, there's time to come back. I'm saying, we were going down this path, but now we have this new information, and what do you think? So, so that's, I think that's a better scenario than just, you know, having a wish list. But really, I think the bigger conversation is, what does this community really want in terms of, how much money do you think the city should spend on infrastructure? And where's that money going to come from? And if we need a new revenue source, because we don't want to take away from libraries and parks and police and fire and everything else, then, then where's that, you know, that's up to the voters to let us know what they want. And that's, you know, a conversation, that's an ongoing conversation, I think, we need to have. So, Mr. Hachkis.
Mr. Wiley, do we need to amend my motion at all to include the mayor's suggestion, short of the big solution part of it?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hachkis, you could do that, or it could be a second motion, follow-up motion, either way.
Well, I'd be happy to incorporate her suggestion to do a little background investigation, if the second or also agrees, whoever that was, that was with your Francisco. Sure, all right, I make that part of the motion.
So, the motion is to, directions to go with the traffic signal, but also to direct staff to do a little more research, given the testimony today. And if by some reason, something should come up that seems favorable in a cost setting, to come back to council.
Exactly, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I want to say how much I appreciate you adding that, and Mr. Hachkis to the motion. I won't be supporting the motion for the reasons I said, but I really do appreciate that. And I will do my part to try to get the information, it would be helpful.
Great, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Opposed.
Okay, it's 5-2. Thank you very much. Okay. Item number 22.
Appointments to city advisory groups.
Thank you. For those watching, the way this works, and just as a reminder for the rest of us, we have a number of appointments to make. And sometimes, there are enough applicants for the slots available. And if we choose, we can move by acclamation for those seats in that particular border commission. When there are more applicants than our seats, then I'll ask council if there's any nominations. We'll, and we'll close nominations. If there are more applicants than there are seats, we'll have a roll call to see who has the majority vote. I want to acknowledge Susan Young in the back of the room for the youth council. We had, I just have to say, I was so impressed by all the interviews we had with all the applicants. And I hope there's something for each and every one of them. There's not going to be enough positions on the youth council. But one way or another, they need to get connected with the city somehow, because they were stellar throughout the city. And that was really, there should be a new story about the good news of the youth in this community, based on those interviews. That was really quite impressive. So, with that, and I know there is a memo attachment, one from the recommendations from the youth council, and I believe the chair, Vet Keel, gave some additional suggestions based on the information of who's actually eligible. So, and Ms. Young, you're here for questions, if we have it when we get there? Okay. Okay. So, first up is the airport commission. There's one vacancy. Are there any nominations?
Nominate Arkury.
Any other nominations? I'll nominate Maciver. Any other nominations? Okay, if we could have a roll call.
Councilmember Francisco.
Arkury.
Hachkis.
Arkury.
House.
Maciver.
Mario.
Arkury.
Rouse.
Arkury.
White.
Maciver.
Mayor Schneider.
Maciver.
We have Mr. Arkury.
Okay. He was also excellent, so. To community events and festivals.
Heaton by acclamation, Madam Mayor.
There's a second?
Second.
Move, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Down two.
Historic landmarks.
Historic landmarks commission.
Nominate Schellenberger.
By acclamation.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Housing authority.
Allen and Woodford.
Second.
Move by acclamation, then? You all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Living Wage Advisory Committee.
Nominate Flex.
Second.
By acclamation.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Neighborhood Advisory Council.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I found out that Ms. Heaton had applied for the community events and festivals and Neighborhood Advisory Council, and the community events and festivals meets once a year. And so, my understanding is that Ms. Heaton can do both.
Are you nominating Ms. Heaton?
I am, thank you.
Second, Heaton.
Okay. Any, that's, so by acclamation, then?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nominate Ally for Parks and Rec.
Second.
That's by acclamation, then?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Actually, let's do the water council. Let's just go to the water commission. Oh, no, wait. Let's do, let's do youth council last. So, so go to single-family design board.
Nominate Willery and Bernstein by acclamation.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the last one was the water commission.
I nominate Keelbaum.
Any other nominations?
Nominate Barry.
Any other nominations? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hachkis.
Barry.
House.
Keelbaum.
Mario.
Keelbaum.
Rouse.
Barry.
White.
Keelbaum.
Mayor Schneider.
Keelbaum.
And Councilmember Francisco.
Barry.
We have Mr. Keelbaum.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. White.
May I make a comment on that? I completely agree that Mr. Barry is an excellent choice. My, my recommendation for Mr. Keelbaum is that he's a civil engineer, and we have a geohydrologist, geologist on, on the council, on the commission at this point. So, as far as function goes, that's, that's why I nominated Mr. Keelbaum. I hope that Mr. Barry gets a chance to, to be on there soon, because I think he's an excellent choice as well.
Okay, well, if he's listening out there, I hope he heard that. That's good. I agree with that. Okay, the Santa Barbara Youth Council.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Mario.
If I may, as the liaison to the youth council, there was a couple of factors that have resulted in some changes to what attachment one says. One is that the clerk's office had wanted the youth council recommendations before the youth council knew who would show up here to talk to us. So, there was kind of a timing issue. So, not everyone that they recommended made it to city council interviews. And then, the second factor to consider is to ensure the correct number of city residents are on the council, and that's per the charter. are on the council, and that's per the charter. So that's pretty important, too, that we're serving, you know, the city's youth. So the suggestions from the Chair and going over the list with those factors in mind, I nominate Santa Barbara High School, Marissa Hernandez and Jacqueline Cabral, San Marcos High School.
Well, are you, there's two ways to do this. If you're agreeing with the recommendation from the youth council as amended, we can go that way.
Oh, okay.
Or if you want to make any changes, then we should go school by school. So, and see what, if the council, so, and I don't know if the rest of the council saw that memo and if they agree with that or want to make, add anybody, we can do that. Go school by school? Okay. Okay.
School by school, please.
All right. So that's what I'm hearing. So, okay, go again. There are two from Santa Barbara High. Ms. Mario, you were going to mention some nominations. Which were they?
Marissa Hernandez and Jacqueline Cabral.
Any other nomination?
Yes. I think Elise Adams is in this group or should be, too.
Yes.
So I would agree with Cabral and Add Adams, please.
And I would nominate Chirichi.
Okay. So we have all four. I do want to remind people, when we get to the end of all of them, there is an at-large position. So anyone in any one of these categories that didn't make it, they might have another spot, and so just think of that as we move forward. So...
Is there a question for clarification? There's a note in my things that Elise Adams says junior high, but then in here it says ninth grade, and I didn't understand. Is she entering high school?
Ms. Young?
I'm sorry. I should have asked that question the other day when I noticed it.
Good afternoon. Councilman House, yes, she is entering to high school. She was at junior high at the time she applied.
I see. All right. Thank you very much for clarifying.
So basically, all four are listed for Santa Barbara High School are eligible as high school, and we can appoint two, and we've nominated all four. So if we can get a roll call, and you can vote for up to two.
Councilmember House.
Cabral and Chirichi.
Mario.
Hernandez, Cabral.
Rouse.
Adams, Hernandez.
White.
Cabral, Hernandez.
Mayor Schneider.
Cabral, Hernandez.
Councilmember Francisco.
Chirichi and Adams.
And Mr. Hotchkiss.
Cabral, Adams.
We have Ms. Cabral and Ms. Hernandez.
And so think of the other two for the at-large if you wanted to nominate them. Okay. So students from San Marcos High School, are there any nominations?
There are.
Okay. What are they?
Sarah Douglas and Nicholas Mayner.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Nominate Goldberg and Rodriguez.
I don't see, oh, there's Goldberg. Goldberg and Rodriguez. Any other nominations?
Simons.
And nominate Wells. Zachary Wells.
Any other nominations? Okay. So we can now vote for up to two.
Councilmember Mario.
Simons, Rodriguez.
Rouse.
Douglas, Simons.
White.
Simons, Rodriguez.
Mayor Schneider.
Simons, Douglas.
Councilmember Francisco.
Goldberg, Rodriguez.
Hotchkiss.
Nicholas Mayner and Sarah Douglas.
And House.
This is really hard. Oh, God. Okay. Simons and Wells.
And which one?
Zachary Wells and Carlos Simons.
There we go. Okay.
We have five votes for Simons, but three votes each for Rodriguez and Douglas.
So we can revote for Douglas or Rodriguez. Is that right? Right. Okay. So there's a second vote for either one, for Rodriguez or Douglas.
Councilmember Mario.
Rodriguez.
Rouse.
Douglas.
White.
Rodriguez.
Mayor Schneider.
Douglas.
Councilmember Francisco.
Rodriguez.
Hotchkiss.
Douglas.
And House.
It is hard. Rodriguez, thank you.
Yeah. Good. Okay. So that was Rodriguez, then. Got it. Dos Pueblos High School, any nominations?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move the youth council recommendations of Ethan Breyer, Isha Kelkar incumbent, and Pablo Saletta incumbent.
Nominate Titlebaum.
Any other nominations? Okay. If we can have a roll call, you can vote for up to three.
Councilmember Rouse.
Breyer, Kelkar, Titlebaum.
White.
Breyer, Kelkar, Saletta.
Mayor Schneider.
Breyer, Kelkar, Saletta.
Councilmember Francisco.
Kelkar, Saletta, Titlebaum.
Hotchkiss.
Breyer, Kelkar, Titlebaum.
House.
Breyer, Kelkar, Saletta.
And Mario.
Breyer, Kelkar, Saletta.
We have Kelkar and Breyer.
And Saletta. I have five votes.
Oh, yes. Sorry. Yes.
So we have three. Okay. And then local private high school or independent studies, I see one.
Linehan by acclamation. Second.
Yes, Ms. Mario?
She was disqualified. She didn't come before us. We're looking at Crystal Aldona.
No, looking at Erin Linehan.
Erin Linehan. I thought she did. This is for local private.
Yeah, she showed up.
Yeah.
So we have an Erin Linehan by acclamation. Is that right? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We don't have anyone for the local alternative community or continuation high school. And then, so now we have an at-large member, which can be anyone who made it to an interview that has not already been appointed. So are there any nominations?
Nominate Douglas.
Nominate Adams.
Adams from Santa Barbara High?
Right.
Okay.
Nominate Chittick.
Hold on. Adams, Douglas, Chittick from San Marcos. Right. Yeah. Ari Chittick. Any other nominations?
And just to clarify, the at-large person needs to be a city person.
Oh, okay. So Douglas is a county person. Thank you for that. I didn't catch that.
Adams is a county person, too.
And so is Adams. Chittick.
Could we review the bidding there, Madam Mayor?
So right now, the only one that qualifies, so the at-large needs to be a city? No, it says member at large may or may not attend any high school. How is that?
Madam Mayor, so just so, from my calculations, and the city clerk may help me out here. So we'll have three vacancies, and we already have two of the youth council members that currently sit our city, but at the end of the 15, it has to be eight. So even if, so even if we do, we need at least to have enough to balance it off even when you make the appointments in December.
Okay. So the question is, if we appoint a county person for the at-large, are we allowed to do that or not?
Then you would not have enough, even once you do the three vacancies, you still wouldn't have the eight city...
So no?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to ask, so the answer, just because of the balancing between city and county residents?
Yes. I think I do that.
Chittick is city.
Chittick is city. So is there someone else who is a city resident that, the other, okay, go ahead.
I think the Scott.
Nominate Joanna Alvarez.
From which school?
San Marcos High. She's the second on the top up there below Amy Allen.
The top.
Alvarez is city here.
Alvarez. Okay. I mean, the other, the other way to go, and I don't mean to muddle this, but we could move one of the ones that we appointed from a city, who lives in the city, to, oh, no, you still can't. Never mind. Never mind. We can take that away. Never mind. All right. So we have Chittick and Alvarez. Do we have any other nominations?
Nominate Ho.
And which, from Dos Pueblos? Menji Ho? Right? Yeah. Any other nominations? Now I have to remember. Right? I'm telling you, you got to find things for all of them to do because they were all pretty awesome. Yeah. Okay. Okay. So we have Chittick, Alvarez, and Ho. Any other nominations? All right. So vote for one, please.
Councilmember White.
Ho.
Mayor Schneider.
Chittick.
Councilmember Francisco.
Chittick.
Hotchkiss.
Chittick.
House.
Alvarez.
Mario.
Chittick.
And Rouse.
Ho.
We have Mr. Chittick.
So...
I have a quick question, if I may. So in that next section called junior high school students, Ari Chittick was listed there along with Elise Adams. And Elise Adams is already chosen for, no, wasn't she chosen? No. Okay.
So... Ms. Chittick was also a junior high at the time that she applied, but she's going into the ninth grade. So she's eligible.
So we don't have any junior high school students considered today?
And I think the way that the resolution reads, Councilman House, is that the youth council select the junior high students, so you don't have to necessarily worry about them.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay.
Wow.
I think we've done everything we need to do. Thank you. That was, thank you for your outreach there. That was pretty incredible. Okay. Councilmember Committee Assignment Reports. Ms. Mario?
Thank you. May I thank Ms. Chek for her good work in keeping track of all that. Thank you so much, Susan. I attended the CAUZ Pueblo Dinner this weekend, and it's a group that looks out for low-income people and low-income residents and our immigrant families. It was a very nice event. I attended the East Side Walks and got sunburned, but did get to see again the challenges that are on Salinas for our pedestrians there. We reviewed some of the dangerous crosswalks, the need for enforcement, and then there's that pinch point at Montecito Street at the creek right below the roundabout, and people just take their lives in their own hands every day going through there. I'd like to appreciate CAUZ, the Coalition for Sustainable Transportation, for putting on the walk. And thanks to the officers who came out. Officer Benson is one of the East Side Traffic Cops. And city staff, the Ms. Grants and the CAUZ, people will tell him that there's speeders and people who, they actually go through stop, stop signs. They don't stop for a stop sign. I don't know about you. I try to stop at a stop sign. So the officers go and they catch people and make citations and give them citations. And the Neighborhood Advisory Council meeting was very productive. Thank you to Mayor Schneider and City Administrator Armstrong, the wizard, for attending that. And I'll let, you know, Councilmember White talk a little bit about the Neighborhood Advisory Council. It's really, we have a great focus. Thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, it really was a good session in helping that council develop greater focus and get a stronger sense of mission there. And I thought one of the great comments that Mr. Armstrong made was, was people were saying, "Well, why doesn't the city do this? Why doesn't the city do that?" And Mr. Armstrong said, "Well, you, council, are the city."